I'm going to ask the board if they would be willing to change the order of the agenda. We have an interview tonight for two applicants for the EDIC, the Economic Development Industrial Corporation, and Kevin Murphy is one of the applicants, but he has to go to work and thought that this meeting started earlier. So I'm going to ask the board if you would be willing to change the order of the agenda and move this forward so we could do it right now by motion. A motion to change the order.
Yeah, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
This is just to do the interviews. We may-
And do the appointment. And do interviews and appointment.
Because I thought there's also discussion about increasing the size of the EDIC.
That's at a later time. Yeah, we're just going to do the interviews and the appointments now. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and thank you, the Board of Selectmen, and I thank you for your indulgence this evening. I'm used to being here on Monday nights for quite some time, and it took a little time to rearrange my schedule once again to get back here this evening, but I thank you very much. I'm an applicant for the EDIC. For those of you who don't know, I have served the last three years as the Board of Selectmen's representative on the EDIC, and it's a pleasure and a breath of fresh air to see that the Board has named a new candidate. But there is an opening on the EDIC, and there are many things that we've begun to accomplish moving forward in the EDIC. Mrs. Flynn served many years as the Board of Selectmen's representative, very knowledgeable to EDIC. There are some initiatives that have begun at the EDIC, and those are probably the reasons that I would like to remain on at this time. And those happen to be a couple of issues. Number one, we were fortunate enough to have some financial resources. The EDIC continues to look for a path to be able to do development and focus on redevelopment in this community. One of the redevelopment opportunities happens to be our solid waste facility, the cap landfill or the dump, for lack of a better term. There are some benefits for the EDIC doing that versus the town, and those benefits could potentially be, if I could summarize one potential opportunity, would be wind. The town couldn't take advantage of tax credits because they're not their municipality, whereas the EDIC could take advantage of tax credits if we were to go the route of solar at that site. We've been able to work together to be able to help in the private roads district, to help Highfield Hall, and those communities up there, to be able to supplement their funding in the form of a loan, to be able to help the development up there in the past year, which was a $50,000 loan, with a guarantee that they would apply for a cultural district, which would help Main Street continue on to Highfield Drive. The EDIC recently has given $100,000 in the form of loan guarantees to Coastal Community Capital, which helps bridge loans for small businesses that may not be able to fully qualify for the funds they were able to do. I don't want to be one of those folks that lingers on in this community forever. I want to be able to ultimately enjoy, you know, this community and the business that I have. But I think that I can add to some institutional memory at the EDIC at this point in time, having worked specifically on those subcommittees that I mentioned here this evening. For those of you who don't know me, my history is that I worked for a Fortune 500 company in a senior management position that happened to be Anheuser-Busch for 12 years. I've been a small businessman in Woods Hole, Schuckers, might as well get a good plug, world famous Robbar and Cafe, for 33 years, and I've owned several other businesses. So I've seen the side of both meeting a payroll as a small businessman, but having worked for a Fortune 500 company. I think that I can continue to add to the EDIC. I know that you have a very viable candidate that also is vying for the same position. My druthers, if I were not the candidate, I would probably be supporting Mr. Zavala. So you have a tough role in front of you to choose a candidate, but I thank you for the opportunity. I'd be happy to open it to questions.
Questions. Becky.
Tell me, what is the main project going to be for this next year with the EDIC in Falmouth?
Well, the EDIC, you know, going based off of the Board of Selectmen's strategic five-year vision, was some redevelopment out on Thomas Landers Road. And I think what the EDIC does need to do is focus its ideas and its activities to one central area. And I think that needs to be where the focus should be. Fortunately or unfortunately enough, the EDIC has a pool of funds, roughly $600,000. We had solicited on many occasions for that money. I think we need to find the best use for that money to be able to spur jobs and growth within this community. At this point in time, no matter what road the redevelopment of the old dump site takes us, we've invested roughly $50,000 of EDIC money. Whether we turn that back to the town and the town moves forward with their idea of development, I think you have a great entrepreneurial aspect on the EDIC to be able to come back and give the board some ideas of how they'd like to move forward. My focus would be to be able to move forward on the Thomas Landers Road section of this community, as well as continue to provide jobs.
Okay, I think it was probably your idea of what actually was going to happen or what was happening with EDIC and the dump. And I know there were quite creative ideas there, and I was just kind of curious about yours, so.
Well, the bottom line is there's a, you know, I know how to work within a committee atmosphere, and I know that my personal opinions don't always necessarily matter. I like to be able to build consensus, so I think we're getting to the point of building consensus in that particular scenario, and the consensus seems to be solar. It also seems to be an opportunity, there's a 10-acre town parcel that is landlocked, and we might be able to provide access to that 10 acres, which could provide some additional light industrial zone property for the town. So those are the two areas where I see this taking us at this point. Again, I'm going to continue to have an open mind as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug?
Do you see the EDIC playing any role in doing the last mile of fiber network from Open Cape to households?
I see the EDIC being a conduit for that. And to give you an illustration, we've worked with Representative Viera to be able to do a survey, because it's really important. A lot of folks think that the last mile is still going to be free when you hook up. We need to make sure that they understand, will you be able to pay? Because even though we have access, that access has to be provided and has to be paid for. There's some other variables out there, and the variable happens to be that Comcast using them as an example, at any time can jump in to Open Cape, because it is in fact an open network. At this time, they choose not to. So we have to make sure that whatever we do, we're not just going to, we are either going to spur Comcast to get into Open Cape, or we're going to spur somebody else to get into Open Cape, or even ourselves to help get into Open Cape. But we'll work with Representative Viera to get some funding in this budget to be able to do a survey, roughly $80,000. We hope that it passes the Governor's desk, and that would be to be able to help us plan for that.
Anybody else with a question?
I have a question.
Sure.
As you know, the EDIC is a quasi municipal agency. And based on that definition, which is in the statute, I mean, it says that's what the EDIC is, how do you think the EDIC should work with the town?
I think that there are, the beauty of the EDIC is that it's an arms-length town quasi-board, meaning that it's at an arms' length, and you're able to use the entrepreneurial spirit there and being able to foster growth within the community. That was proven with the development of the industrial park. Something else that the RTDC, the Regional Technology Scenario that they developed, unfortunately, that wasn't successful. Everything you do is not always successful, but you have to try to be able to spur economic development. How can the town and the EDIC work together? I think this is a primary example of us doing this redevelopment opportunity at the dump. We're able to have some funds, come back and make a presentation ultimately to the Board of Selectmen. It's going to be ultimately the Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting's decision, not the EDIC's. We hopefully will come back with some ideas to be your workhorses, for lack of a better term, to be able to help move forward economic development. And I think we can continue to do things like that. I would ask that if I'm not the representative, that the Board of Selectmen task the EDIC with certain things that they would like to see helped move forward. And the EDIC has an opportunity to tap in to a lot of business here that's within the community. And the good part of that is that all of those are entrepreneurs. And in government, you're not necessarily making a profit, but with the EDIC, a lot of those folks, if they see an opportunity, as Mr. Jones said about Open Cape and the last mile, if we can get folks on board to be investors in some form or fashion to be able to do that final mile, that is in effect where we can work together.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? In consultation with my Vice Chairman, we have determined that we're not going to take the vote until later in the meeting. We're just going to do the interviews because we have a public hearing.
As a matter of fact, that's not a problem, is it? The EDIC does not meet in the month of August. I know you have some opportunities moving forward, but that's not a problem. And I wish you well in your deliberations.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jay Zavala? Oh, there he is.
Madam Chairman, thank you for inviting me to be with you this evening. I'm not a stranger to the EDIC. I have followed it for many years. I've sat in on many occasions and offered commentary. Today, as I plan my scheduled departure from the Chamber of Commerce, I'm looking to serve my community in other areas where I believe I can make a contribution. I share the Cape Cod Commission's view that economic development on Cape Cod begins with protecting our natural, our built, and our cultural assets that make us unique. The importance of being unique should not be underestimated in this era of standardization. Cape Cod has the enviable advantage of having near global name recognition and a reputation for being a special place of great beauty. I submit that we must protect that. As I stated in my remarks to the EDIC Board last week, I approach economic development discussions with certain core principles. I believe that the most effective economic development strategies are those that put people to work, keep people at work, and increase tax revenues to improve the quality of life. The EDIC is currently engaged in interesting projects, but none are so critical as to require the singular presence of any member of the EDIC in order to go forward. In effect, this is a good time for the infusion of new blood. Projects such as the reuse of the landfill, working with MassDOT on improving the bus depot, the East Falmouth Main Street Vision Planning, and exploring broadband interest and the like are moving along. I know the current members of the EDIC. I value their judgment. I can work with them. I've placed before you my credentials, my interests, and my enthusiasm for the work of this Board. I'm fit to serve on this Board of this corporation. Thank you. I'll take your questions.
Questions. Would you like to ask your question?
I'll ask you the same question as I asked Mr. Murphy. Tell me what your opinion of what should happen at the dump.
At the dump? Well, actually, the question that you posed then was whether should the EDIC go forward, and based on the same strategic plan that Kevin mentioned, it has a role to play, not only in Part 1, which is, I believe, 1.2.2 with regards to business development, but it also has a role to play at Part 3, which is the energy portion of it. And I believe there's two action items there where they work with the Board of Selectmen in order to meet their objectives. 3.2.2 and 3.3.3 are these other action items that they're embedded into the strategic plan going forward. So those are the two critical areas that they have an obligation to be a participant in. The other things that they're required to do by statute is very focused, very deliberate, and it is industrial and one other facet, development, and nothing else, quite frankly. The purpose of the EDIC is to work in those two areas, and at the Town Meeting is supposed to pass a plan, and then the EDIC is supposed to execute it. They don't have a mandate for any other action. But to their credit, since they've completed those two major projects, manufacturing is the other, light manufacturing. And since they've completed those objectives, they've been very active in the community, inviting the business community in. They've invited the civic, the cultural, the environmental. They've invited neighborhood associations to come in and share with them what their interests are, what their desires are, and even on some occasions to request some form of support. Kevin mentioned the $100,000 that was placed with Community Capital, and that's there to loan out and serve as an incubation of sorts, and that's another positive thing that it's done. But it's not within the framework of Massachusetts General Law 121(c). This is over and above, and so credit goes to the EDIC Board for taking the initiative, but it's not what they were empowered to do in order to perform their function.
Thank you.
Doug?
And so what role do you see the EDIC playing in Open Cape in the last mile?
I'm glad you asked, Doug. Really, I think the EDIC should be even further away from the Board of Selectmen than it currently is. For example, Sue Moran has just been appointed by the Board of Selectmen to the EDIC. There's been an amendment to that state statute back in 2011 that says, in a town, the Board of Selectmen should not appoint one of its own to a board that they govern. And in order for the EDIC to be truly effective, I think it has to take an arms-length distance from the Select Board and work together in its own confines to make things happen.
I guess my question wasn't clear. On the Open Cape and getting the internet to the people.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I sit on the Board of Directors of Open Cape in its developmental stages. This last phase of it, in fact, I was instrumental in bringing the question before the EDIC about the megabyte city and looking at alternatives on how this municipality could on its own undertake the broadband initiative that has been undertaken by other communities across the country. The reminder that Comcast is out there, that Verizon is out there, and that they too have a privilege of getting onto the broadband scares people away, saying, why should we start this kind of an initiative if Comcast or Verizon just simply can camp onto it? They have the resources. They have the technology. They have the ability to usurp whatever we may create. That initiative through our state representative for that funding for the survey is in fact to find out if there's any appetite for us to go forward. We have an obligation to find out what our capacity is, what our abilities are, and that's what this survey will undertake. And until that survey is complete, I think the jury's still out. I don't know that we should be doing much more than that.
Anybody else? I'm going to ask my question. As you probably know, the EDIC is a quasi-municipal agency by statute, and how do you think the EDIC can work effectively with the town?
I think I answered your question first when Doug was posing his. I'll simply reiterate that I think the EDIC Board should not have a member of the Board of Selectmen on it. I think the liaison would serve very effectively and bring back to the select body what is happening on that EDIC Board, but as a quasi, it should be separate.
Well, except that the statute requires there be a select.
Not what I found. So until, and in fact, I placed the question before our Town Manager. In doing some research, I happened to find that 2011 piece of legislation, the amendment, that said that in fact, in a town, a town should not appoint one of its own to a body that they govern.
Well, we won't go into the legal pieces, but I'm just really, my whole point was to see how you thought that the EDIC could work with the town, because...
Well, you know, it's been working with the town since 1981, and it's been working with the town very effectively. I don't know that there's any mechanism or any desire to move further away than what I suggest. Of course, because it is a seven-member body, one man's opinion is simply that. That's what I found. That's what my research has led me to understand, whether or not it's the best mechanism for a relationship between this body and the town. It's been working.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much, Jay.
You're very welcome.
And we will take up the vote at the end of the meeting when it's regularly scheduled. So now we'll move on to the public hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws is amended. That Hostmark Falmouth Management, DBA Falmouth Holiday Inn, has applied for a transfer of an all-alcoholic in holder license located at 291 Jones Road, Falmouth, Mass.
Madam Chair, can I just interrupt for a second, just to note that we are taking the public hearings out of order in our agenda, because it is a time thing and posted in the, just to clarify, if people are wondering why not to the set of actions, that's the reason we're moving on to a hearing right away.
Normally, public hearings are conducted at the time at which they are noticed, and we did not do that tonight because we did not think it appropriate to interrupt the school committee interviews and appointments. So that's why, and I apologize for not taking here the appointed time.
That's fine. I've been in my town for a number of years. I know how these things happen.
So you know what it's like. So a hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, June 14, at 7:45 p.m., which is not the case. So for the applicant, yes, introduce yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Albert Di Napoli, and I represent Hostmark Falmouth Management, LLC. We have an application before you, as you've mentioned, for a transfer of the liquor license from the present liquor license holder at the Falmouth Holiday Inn. Also, we have an application for appointment of the manager of record, Cheryl Barrett, and Ms. Barrett is here with me today. And I can tell you something about Ms. Barrett. And also, we have an application before you for the innkeeper's permit. And basically, the Falmouth Holiday Inn has been sold and is operating under new management under that purchase and sale agreement. Hostmark Falmouth Management, LLC, is going to provide the food and beverage service at the location. The agreement between the purchaser and the now the intended license holder to provide that service is part of the package that has been provided to you. I also have the affidavits of notice. Carolyn had asked me that I bring these tonight, as I know I must with the originals. She also asked me for a couple of FID numbers that she wanted to make sure that she could put them into the record, so if I may provide them to whomever, so that they can find their way to Carolyn.
Okay, yes, we'll be glad to take those.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Barrett is the suggested manager of record for the liquor license. Ms. Barrett has been at the Holiday Inn for 30 years. She can tell you about her start there and how she worked her way all the way up to the top, and has been the general manager there for the past seven years, but has never been the manager of record on the liquor license. And we think it's appropriate at this point to have the general manager also be the manager of record. She lives in town, and she is certainly, I think, a great person to be the point person, as the manager of record should be relative to the liquor license. So that being said, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the Board have any questions? Yes.
Probably the middle way, there is a page that has the occupancy of premises, and it is number eight. So if you start it from the beginning and go to number eight.
I have that.
On renewal term, toward the bottom, it says it's automatic for one year and every year. Just an explanation then.
That's the operation and management agreement for the food and beverage manager there. It's going to be a one-year automatic term unless someone were to cancel and terminate under the provisions of the agreement. So that there's no requirement after a year for the provider of the food and beverage service to have to do anything to reapply internally with the owner of the hotel to continue its management, and it automatically renews itself for a year unless either side wishes to terminate. But there's no, it's kind of technical that there's no need for them to take any action in order to renew the agreement between the two parties. That's what it essentially means. I don't know if that answers the question.
What I'm listening to and what I'm reading says occupancy of premises.
Yes.
And this is just, it's concerned with the manager.
Okay. The occupancy of premises section here asks on what legal construct does the applicant have a right to occupy the premises? And the reason that they have that-
This is a better answer.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know where you were going the first one. My apologies. And the way that they have the right to occupy these premises is through this management agreement, that they will provide food and service, beverage management, with, for the owner of the hotel. And that gives them the right, and there are provisions in the agreement, which basically provides them with the right to occupy the premises on behalf of the manager to provide the food and beverage service. That agreement, again, is renewable automatically every year.
It's not part of the liquor license. They still come to us every year for food.
No, no, I wasn't putting it there, but I guess to explain myself would be that I have never seen that answer in the box anytime we have looked at this. There has always been a beginning and an end. And when it said automatic one year, I noticed it.
Sure.
That's what I'm saying, dear.
Sure, I understand. I hope that answered the question.
Anybody else have a question? Now, okay, so I will ask anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this license. Is there anyone opposed to the license?
May I remove, we close the hearing?
Okay.
I'll say.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. I would like to point out that there is also in here an application for a automatic amusement device, but unfortunately, it wasn't included in the notice, so we'll have to put it on the agenda for our next meeting. So we'll only be voting the change of manager and the transfer.
And the innkeeper's license too?
And the innkeeper's license.
Okay.
But amusement is, yes. And that requires a notice to the public because it is an amusement license, and sometimes the butters like to know that, and they don't because it wasn't there.
I'll be glad to come back to Falmouth.
Thank you very much.
My family's over at the quad deck waiting for me now, so I'm glad to-
All right, is there any, the hearing is closed, and is there anyone who cares to make a motion on this application?
I would move approval of the transfer of ownership and change of manager and the transfer of license.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? The motion's unanimous, and the motion counts. None opposed, the motion's unanimous, and the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Should we reencord it? We're joining the court now.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Okay, well, then we have another public hearing notice. Is Tyler here? Where did he go?
He's right here.
Oh, there he is. The Ty, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 of the Wetlands Regulations of the zoning bylaw on a request for a shellfish aquaculture permit by Ty Perini, 24 Homer Avenue, North Falmouth. Request for this permit was received on June 4th, 2014, in the office of the Board of Selectmen. Said hearing will be held on Monday, July 14th, at 7:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. Let me just say that we already had issued a license previously to Ty. And when Marine Fisheries actually went out and did their part, they found that the coordinates were not what it was planned to be. And so, because the coordinates for the area had to change, it requires Ty to come back and apply for another license. Same area, but different coordinates. So maybe you want to comment on that?
Basically, what happened is Jerry Mills from the Division of Marine Fisheries found a little bit of eel grass on the, close to the southern border of my lease, our proposed lease. And so I'm just, I literally just moved it 40 feet north. They're supposed to be 25 feet away from it, so I did 40 feet north. And that's really how it changed.
So is it, so is your area larger or smaller now? It's a little smaller?
It's the same size.
It's the same size?
Just 40 feet north.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
No? Becky?
That doesn't create any conflict at all?
No, no, it doesn't.
So you could have come in with the very first time that you requested and requested at 25 feet further?
Well, I didn't have the survey done yet, so I had to come in, either way.
You had to come in with...
I had to come in for approval to get the Division of Marine Fisheries to do their survey. And now that they did it, and they found this bit of eel grass on the, close to the southern border, so now I'm just moving it north 40 feet. So I'm in compliance.
And there isn't going to be anyone else coming in that you know that is going to be asking to fill in that space that you've moved out of?
No, I talked to Jerry, and he said, he said, "It should be fine. No additional survey needed." I just have to get the thumbs up here, and that's it.
Is there anyone in the, here who would like to speak in favor of this license? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? A motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. So now, the board, what is your pleasure?
I would move approval of the alteration of the agricultural license to show the, moving the parcel 45 feet, or 25 feet, I guess. I'm sorry?
I move approval of the new coordinates.
Okay. I'll say.
Sorry. Go.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? It's very clear here in the notice. So all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Ty. Good luck. I'll discuss with this. I have to go back and find my agenda again. So now we're going to go back to the summary of actions. The, there are four. And the first is an application for an inholder license at the Beach Rose Inn at 17 Chase Road, West Falmouth. The second is an application for a one-day liquor license at the Woodsville Historical Museum on July 26th. And the second is for the same request for August 22nd, 2014. And a one-day liquor license for the Samaritans on Cape Cod and the Islands at Falmouth Academy, the Bocce Festival on September 20th, 2014. Questions?
I would like to hold, if it isn't too late, number one. I just have one question on the application.
Number one. Okay. Anybody else want to hold any? Maybe we could approve then two, three, and four. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of items two, three, and four, summary of actions.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. All right, one.
On the Beach Rose Inn, is there anyone here? I just have a question, just one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Select Board. My name's Tom Gilligan. I'm the Executive Director for Compassionate Care ALS. We are the applicant.
Okay. Explain to me the Compassionate Care ALS.
Okay, so we are an organization that was founded in 1998 here in Falmouth, and we're based here in Falmouth. And we help individuals who have Lou Gehrig's disease and their families deal with the disease. We're a 501(c)(3), and we presently help about 400 families. And we've helped over 1,000 families deal with the disease since our inception in 1998.
And your connection to the Beach Rose Inn?
It's a really good question. So the existing owners of the property have sublet it to us with the intention of us purchasing the property. And so what we're doing with it now, and what we plan to do with it, is allow respite for caregivers and family members of people with ALS. So that's what we're doing with the property, is having guests. It's a reduced use. If you notice the history, or if you looked into the history of the property, we're not applying for a liquor license. We're not applying for food and beverage license. It's kind of come-as-you-are, pack a picnic lunch. And I'm happy to say, we don't have any commercial dumpsters, and we will not be getting any commercial dumpsters. So you don't have to worry about the post 7:00 PM prior to 7:00 AM pickup. Other questions?
I just wanted you to explain that to the public. And I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other questions?
Sure. What's the current status of the building? For example, usually inkeepers need a higher level of fire safety than, for example, residences. Since you're not, you're kind of low-keying it, what's the status of those kinds of safety?
It's completely up to code. We're keeping up with all of the inspections. And the fire extinguisher company, for lack of a better term, just came in last month and recertified all the fire extinguishers and all the fire exits and the emergency lighting.
Is it handicapped accessible?
It is, well, not by our definition. So right now, it's not. But on the long-term plan is to make one of the buildings fully handicapped accessible with a ramp. And fully handicapped accessible doors, bathrooms, showers. But today, that doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the inholder license for the Compassionate Care ALS.
At Beach Rose Inn?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate your being here. Okay, now we're going to move to administrative orders. And we have 11 of these. The first is the approved payment from the Recreation Department revolving account, the Boston Red Sox, for $1,700. And I want to explain this. The Boston Red Sox, as you may know, has sent messages to various communities, maybe all of them, but certainly we received one in Falmouth, that they would offer special seating for people from the town of Falmouth, or however we wanted to do it, at a game. And we could choose the game, and they told us which ones you can't, you can't reserve seats. But they would reserve 50 seats in the grandstand at certain games. And so the Recreation Department thought that this would be a good opportunity to give the town employees an opportunity to go to a game. So they selected a Saturday in August. And what hap, the way it is working is that the Recreation Department receives a donation from the Falmouth Road Race each year for special events. And the Recreation Department is hiring the bus. And any employee who chooses to buy a ticket for the game buys their ticket. And then, and it's $34 a ticket, and the game is on a Saturday. So it works really well. So it's an opportunity for the town to say thank you to the employees and give them the opportunity of being able to buy a ticket for a particular game and then just be transported with the bus. So that's what this is all about. But this is to, this was to use the money for the Recreation Department, who paid for the tickets in advance because it was easier. But then when the, each of the employees buys a ticket, that money goes back to the revolving fund and replenishes it to what it was before. Yes?
It's just in Sunday instead of Saturday?
Oh, it moved to Sunday?
It says the 24th.
Oh, okay. It started on, maybe they changed it then. Okay, so that's what that is. The second is a license agreement for the U.S. Geological Survey Monitoring Well at a public park between Iroquois and Toledo Streets off Maravista. Now, the Board of Selectmen held a site visit at the site this past week on Thursday. We notified the residents that we were going to be there, and Dennis LeBlanc from the Geological Service was there. And we had an opportunity to talk to some of the neighbors, particularly the woman who lives right near where this well is, it's a monitoring well. Actually, it's a good idea to really go and see this, where it's going to be. And the neighbors were very supportive to this, I must say. And the woman who lives right near where this well is going to be drilled was thrilled and very happy that this was going to take place. The whole idea was that the wellhead is very small in diameter. It's probably only about this big, and it's flat to the ground. And when the grass grows, it'll probably grow over it. And the only one who will really know where it is is the Geological Service, who is doing the monitoring, who comes out periodically to test the water. And the types of pipes that they put in, they're very narrow pipes, and so, I mean, it's not really a big deal. It's just digging in, putting some pipes down, putting a cover over it. And the real purpose here is that this, this will be monitoring the groundwater that moves into Little Pond, or, you know, downstream. And it'll give the USGS the opportunity to test the water for nitrogen now before the sewers are put in, because this is an area that's going to be sewed as part of the Little Pond area. So they will have data prior to the sewers being installed, and then have data during and after. So it will be very good information for the scientists and all of us to know how effective this is going to be. Now, that's what that is. The second is authorized, the third is to authorize the town manager to submit a grant application for give the bay a push to the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program, subject to the Water Quality Management Committee authorizing funds for the duration of the Execute a quitclaim deed from the town of Falmouth to the Steamship Authority for Lot 18. Authorize the town manager to execute the DCAM, which is Division of Capital Asset Management of the State. The DCAM statement of beneficial interests related to the Steamship Authority land swap, which you remember, town meeting voted this one or two meetings ago. Seven is to accept a donation to the Police Department donation account from the Falmouth Track Club in the amount of $500 for equipment for a special response team. The next one is accept a donation to the Beach Department donation account from the Old Stone Dock Association in the amount of $599 for window boxes at the Surf Drive Beach House. And then nine, 10, and 11 are pretty much go together. To approve the regulatory agreement for the Affordable Housing Lip Project at 761 T-Ticket Highway. To authorize the town manager to execute that agreement, and to approve the deed from the town of Falmouth conveying the property at 761 T-Ticket Highway to the Falmouth Housing Trust in accordance with Article 3 of the April 6, 2010 town meeting.
I have one very minor one on number eight. Just might like to continue to call it the Ellen Mitchell Beach House.
Oh, instead of the Surf Drive Beach House? You're right. Because that's exactly what it is. Thank you for that. Uh, Sam?
I just have a question about the land swap up in the Technology Park. Great Rock. As I recall from town meeting, there were some presumed carons that surrounded Great Rock, and this seems to specify just the rock being preserved? Is there supposed to be more to this restriction?
I...
Or did we decide those were not archaeological?
No, I think that restriction was voted by town meeting.
Yeah.
So that vote is very, it's very specific.
Okay.
To the vote, and this represents the actual vote of town meeting. So whatever we voted at town meeting specifically in terms of the coordinates, if you will, for lack of a better word, then that's what we are approving.
That area specifically. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any questions on the administrative orders?
I would move approval of administrative orders, items one through 11.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That's including your changing of the name when you're saying that?
Oh, yes. The Ellen Mitchell Beach House. Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. And now we have a special event. Approve an application for a beach wedding ceremony on Woodneck Beach on August 16th. I think there is a note in there from our beach superintendent, Don Hopper, suggesting that the bride might want to consider shuttle service to the beach because Woodneck Beach does not have much parking to speak of. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the Chanel Warro wedding at Woodneck Beach on August 16th, 2014.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. The next item, under general business, is a discussion to invoke a letter of interest for entering into a license for the Nobbska Lighthouse. And some of you may have read the paper where the Coast Guard has now determined they do not want to be involved with the lighthouse to the degree that they can sever themselves from ownership. They actually will continue to maintain the lighthouse itself and the light. And, but when it comes to the structure, the house and all of that, it's been customary now for the Coast Guard to find other people, or other groups, or nonprofits, or agencies, or individuals to take on the responsibility of the general property at a lighthouse. So they have notified the town that they are interested in seeking an application from an entity, whoever that might be, to have, to be granted a license for the purpose of determining how that lighthouse could be used for the benefit of the public. So the group who is doing it, there are about four or five nonprofits in the town who are working together on this because there is a lot of support in the community to preserve Nobbska and not to just let it fall apart. So they weren't quite ready yet tonight. And we, the town manager and I have met with the group, and sometimes it might be in the interest of the municipality to be the license holder, using the same model for Highfield. If you might know that Highfield is owned by the town, and there is a contract from between the town and Highfield to operate it for over a period of time. We have done that with other places, not very many. But this would follow that same model where the town would hold the license, but there would be a nonprofit group that would be formed to actually do all the work, and whatever it is they're going to do. Well, they're not quite ready to do that. I just wanted to tell you, I think we probably put it on a little too soon, but we're going to bring it back on July 28th, and hopefully, because the drop-dead date for getting a letter of interest to the Coast Guard is August 5th. So, yes.
August 4th.
August 4th, thank you very much.
60 days.
60 days, okay. So that's where we are. So this will be back on our agenda on July 28th. And we're very interested in working with the nonprofits to pursue this. Because as somebody said, we are historic Falmouth, and we care very much about our historic properties, and we don't want to see them just slide away.
And that's certainly an icon in the town.
Yes, definitely. Every picture of the... Every picture of the road race is, is an obstacle with the flag flying. Okay, so the next item is, is a discussion and vote on streetlights. There's been a lot of work and a lot of discussion on this, thank you very much, and a lot of discussion on this. And I think we're probably have reached the point where we might be ready to vote. Peter McConaty is here. You've been taking the lead on this for some time. Did you want to comment on where we are and...
Yes, good evening. Peter McConaty, town engineer. Yes, as you stated, there's been many, many meetings at the Selectman's office and also meetings held at, at Town Hall with residents, concerned residents and members from the Cape Light Compact. The most recent meeting that we've had is a new LED bulb that can be retrofitted into these Admiral, Admiral hats, as they call them, Admiral hat lights. It seemed to be very accepted among the residents and amongst the town. It seems like it's going to do, it's going to improve the lighting in, in all these areas where the Admiral hat lights are currently. This new recommendation is to consolidate some of the lights in the areas. There's areas on Route 28A and West Falmouth Highway. There's several, maybe eight LED streetlights out there, the typical Cobra head streetlights out there. We want to convert them back to the Admiral hat type light bulbs. And what we'd do is we'd take them from other areas of town where there's single lights. We're trying to have the lights all basically be the same, same type of light, lighting when you're driving down the street. So 28A, 99% of those lights are the Admiral hat lights. So we're trying to convert all those lights out there. So you won't be getting that glare from the eye, the glare up and down from the bright lights to the, to the less dimmer lights. So the lights that will go to 28A are, some of the lights from the town green, some of the lights from Lakewood Highway. To kind of consolidate those lights out there to the LED, the lights out there are already LED to keep them LED, once again, to have the same, the same lighting effect, so.
Okay, so you have the, the map here in, in your pocket. And I think just to say that West Falmouth Highway being the historic district and it's outlined in green, that will stay with the Admiral hats. And some of the other, Woods Hole, some of the other areas in town that have the Admiral hats will stay that way, but they'll have a new bulb? Is that the, or no? How does that work?
Some, some of the areas where the Admiral hats are, there's single lights. There's, there's, there's a couple on Mill Road, there's a couple at the town green here. There's some over Lakewood Highway. Some of those lights will be converted over to the LED streetlight, the Cobra Head, and we'll take those lights from the invent, and bring them into inventory and replace the lights on 28A to give it more consecutive.
And save.
Correct. And then any additional lights that are, that are taken, I don't think there's going to be too many more that are going to be converted, but any lights that are taken and converted to the LED Cobra Heads will be stored at the DPW facility. So when these, if these Admiral hat lights do fail in the future, we'll be able to convert them. Now, along with the bulb, they're also going to be converting the photocell on them also, and they're going to be checking the wires, connectivity of the wires. I think we have Cape Light Compact here. Kevin Galligan has also worked, I do have to give kudos to Cape Light Compact and Kevin Galligan. He is behind the scenes, he has worked very hard at putting these streetlights together. Every email that I've sent over to Kevin, within a day's, I get a response to him. So he's worked very hard at doing cost comparisons and I think he's been very, he's been very helpful to the town and he's, he's worked hard with the town and very patient with the town as we went through this over the past year. So it's been a long haul.
Questions from the board? Sue?
Hi. I looked at this with great interest. I know that there's been a, a working group. Catherine Bumpus, I know is on it, Heather was working on it, several other people, and a lot of attention and work went together to put, you know, put a sensible plan. And I just was curious about the numbers, and I think you might have gotten a request from me earlier in the week in terms of the savings. When the plan initially was announced, there, there was, you know, some savings that were contemplated, and then the plan was tweaked a little by the contractor and there was a different price. And, and so I'm, I didn't have that material handy, and I wondered if, if you were able to get it since my request for this meeting, the original savings, the savings that were, where we are now and, and where we'll be if, if the, if this plan goes ahead.
Yeah, I, I do actually have that paperwork in front of me, but maybe better to answer the question would be Kevin from Cape Light, because he's the one that did the comparisons for the, for the lighting?
Terrific. Great.
Yes, Kevin.
I did put this together, sorry. It's exactly what you would ask for. I can walk you through.
Okay.
Proceed. So again, for the board, Kevin Galligan, I'm program manager with the Cape Light Compact.
I remember, thank you.
Good to be with you again.
Thank you.
For new board members, welcome. And thanks very much for the support and patience on this project. And again, before looking at numbers, I also want to sing praises for the committee that worked together. Catherine and many other folks really did an awesome job. Tom is your resident historian on streetlights, and don't ever forget that.
We will.
It's really, it's been a, a great working effort. Things that we had not known, we've learned through the process. You know, many that are unique attributes to Falmouth, and I believe we've represented those. But Sue, to your point, you asked for each of the three scenarios. This column, one is scenario one, if in fact, as we originally proposed, we converted all of them. We know when we last met with the Selectmen, the Admiral hats were put on hold to remain, quote, "as is" as CFL, that's scenario two. But scenario three, which is the column we're focused on today, if you approve use of the LED screw-in bulbs for Admiral hats, as well as the reconfiguration with Peter's direction on a few of the others, would actually provide me from a ratepayer management standpoint, a lower cost. The total project cost is less, which is good. The other thing is if you zoom right down to the annual kilowatt hour savings, again, the LED screw-in bulb is actually going to generate more savings than we would have with the more commercial grade industrial fixtures. So you actually do accrue more energy savings. You will see a little bit slight increase in your maintenance because to maintain the Admiral hats, as I think in Heather's email circulated, you'll see a little change order from Siemens, not a significant amount, but at the same time, that's more than offset by the monthly bill savings. So it really is a good story. I don't need to belabor this for you because I think, you know, you've got a good plan here. And thank you again.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks a lot.
Spent a lot of time in Falmouth in the last year, Kevin, so we appreciate it.
Maybe just to say to the public, so they hear the numbers, that scenario one is about $121,578. Scenario two is...
In savings.
In savings. Scenario three is about $3,000 less. And scenario three is $120,942. So we're talking a difference of about $600.
For a hugely better plan.
Right. And so I do want to applaud both Kevin and also the, the group of citizens who worked together in coming up with a solution that, I think we might still do some tweaks to it, but it just, it's really so, so refreshing to see the groups work together like this.
Would any of you like to, Catherine?
Okay, since we're all feeling very nice, I want to stand here and thank the board for not including this the first time around and giving us the time to work this out. For Julian and Heather for sitting down with us any number of times. For Peter for putting up with sitting down with us. And Kevin Galligan for doing it again and again. I think when we were last here, there was a discussion that, you know, that maybe there wasn't a perfect solution. We have come close to a near perfect solution. It's different than anyplace else, and we appreciate the time that, that it took and that we had the time to do it. So thank you.
You're welcome. And we're happy to do that. Steve, did you want to say something? Oh, you're just happy.
I'm there.
You're in. Okay.
Sorry, just one more thing.
Sure.
The, and there's a going forward plan where the, the pieces are saved, there's a maintenance plan. I mean, this really looks into the future. So I, I don't know that that's been nice about, so that, that's really another tribute to, to everyone working together.
The one area that I'm still a little concerned about, and that is the Village Green area of those going to the Cobra Heads as opposed to maintaining Admiral lights. Is that necessary to give us the inventory we need to do West Falmouth Highway? If I had my druthers and we could do it, I would prefer to keep the Village Green area with the Admiral hats and the screw-in LEDs. Is that, and I'm not sure Peter or Kevin whether...
From my, it's your call. And I will, Peter, who will make those refinements.
Um, yes, actually, it's, it's, it's the board's call. That, those inventories, that equaled out the, the lights at the Village Green and working down towards Mill Road, there was about eight or nine lights. And those eight or nine lights would be enough lights to, to retrofit the LED lights out on 28A. The consensus in the meeting, at, at, at that meeting was that in, across the town green and the summertime and the fall time, Falmouth pushes a lot of tourism through the, through the town green area with the church. You get the church, you get the post office. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic down there. And the sidewalks are, they're in okay condition, but it's not, they're not in great condition. So that's why we felt it would be best to, to convert those over to the LEDs.
It just strikes me as an area where you already have so much ambient light as it is, as opposed to on the highways of, you know, in the Lakewood area where it's a real highway, I can understand the enhanced lighting. In the, sort of this downtown Village area, it just didn't strike me as being quite as necessary, especially if these screw-in LEDs aren't that much different to Siemens than the Cobra Head LEDs.
Yeah, it, well, you'll see a noticeable difference. They're more of a yellow, a yellow intent to them. It's not as, as much light output on the, on the bulbs. I, I don't have the map in front of me, I think the map is there, they're small, small maps, but I think there's might be three over, the three lights at the town green. And then as it goes around, down towards the...
Maybe the town, this was an internal recommendation, and maybe Julian could speak to it.
Sure, I'm happy to. Thank you. The, as Peter's mentioned, we have a, a minority of Admiral hat lamps in the Village Green area now, so the decision was made strictly based on public safety that it would be in the public's best interest to go to full LEDs there because, as Peter's mentioned, of the amount of vehicular and pedestrian traffic through that area. So it's not a matter of Admiral hat lamps being taken down en masse in the Village Green because it is just a scattered circumstance of Admiral hats. And the feeling is that it would be much safer for the public. And I think you see that over the past few weeks and in the weeks to come. And it also allows us to better mask the Admiral hats in those areas where they are predominant so that you don't have the variations Peter referred to in levels of illumination. My personal view with the, because we do, we have a test screw-in bulb at Millfield and School Street, and those have been able to observe it. In my opinion, it is a great improvement in terms of illumination over the existing Admiral hat fixtures, but it is still less well illuminated than the LEDs. And that's the reason for the concern where we have high traffic areas around the Village Green. And even more pedestrian than vehicular is my concern, so.
My interpretation of the map is it looks like there are a whole bunch of the, just the way the map is drawn with the dots. And I think that's just a misreading of the...
True. It does leave that impression, Selectman Jones. I don't know, Peter, if you can further confirm.
I am.
We're not talking about a large number of Admiral hats, but a minority of them, I believe.
Three or four out of 16 or something like that?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the, there might be two or three over at the green. And then as you go down north, the Main Street over, off of Hewitts and towards Locust Street and down towards Mill Road, there's, there's a couple more. And that's where that, that's where that seven or eight or nine lights would come from.
Out of, from a percentage point we're talking about, out of 30 in that area, that seven of them are the Admirals, or is it...
In the town, in the town...
In that sort of general...
Green area. I don't know the exact number of lights. I don't think there's, I don't think there's 30. There might be 15. There might be 15 or 16 of them in that area.
So now we're saying half of them are Admirals and half are LEDs. That no longer strikes me as being hit or miss here and there. It's half for one, half for the other. If I felt it was three out of 20, I'd go right ahead. When it's half is one, half is the other, which way do we go?
I think it is that range. I think it is three out of, it is definitely minority of the Admiral hat lights in the area.
Much less than what the...
Than, than, than the LED...
And the rest are LED.
LED lights.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but since that's a part of town, it's sort of the entry to town, it will look different if you have the different, if you have three lights or four lights that are different from all the other lights. I, I think, and it isn't as if people, well, there are some people who live around the green, but to me, it would make more sense for the continuity of it to have it all be the LEDs since there are only a few of them.
See, I would agree with it all being something. And in some ways, in the Village Green, our most historic area, saying, why not have that be one of the places where we go all Admiral hats? Not, I, I agree not to have one this way and one that way in that area.
But I think what he's saying is they're mostly LEDs and there are very few Admiral hats.
The numbers keep changing. At one point, he said there are seven out of 15, which strikes me as half. And another place is saying it's three out of...
No.
No, I don't think there's seven, I don't think there's seven Admiral hats out there. I think there's seven altogether in this area between the green and Locust Street going down towards Mill Road. I think in the town green area, there, there might be only three maybe, three to four maybe.
Out of...
I'd say maybe 10, 12, 15.
Who really does it matter?
I mean, we did, I did take a look down there this past spring before the daylight savings time, and, and, and there's a difference in the lighting between the LED lights and between the Admiral hat lights. There, there's a noticeable difference.
Sure is.
So.
Madam Chair, if I could just mention, I think, I think the issue is, and Selectman Jones makes, Jones makes a great point, but either I think you're going to have to import more Admiral hats and remove them from corridors where they now exist, or you're going to have to put those in, in inventory and redistribute them in the corridors as Peter suggested. So I think you, if, if you decide to convert the town common, the Village Green area and the Locust Street area fully to Admiral hats, you're going to change the corridor of appearance that we've outlined here, meaning Woods Hole and 28A. I just don't think the numbers are great enough to do it otherwise. And I think, and I agree with you 100%, it shouldn't be helter-skelter, it should be all one or the other. And right now, it's a combination, and that really is contrary to what we're recommending.
Sam?
I'm just trying to get a baseline for myself. Currently, most of the Admiral hat lights have the screw-in CFL bulbs.
Correct.
And you said there is at least one sample of the new LEDs?
That was just put in approximately two weeks ago as a test, just as the other LED lights were put in as a test. It's at the corner of Millfield Street and School Street in Woods Hole.
Okay, I, since I didn't get to that particular location, does the color about the same and the intensity about the same as the CFLs?
It's a, it's a, it's a lighter LED light. It's more of a yellow, yellowish color to it, so.
It's much closer to the CFL than it is to the LED.
It's much closer to the CFL, but it's a, it's a big improvement over the existing CFLs that are in the remaining of the lights.
Right.
That, there's, at this time, there are no more add, the fixtures that we have are only the fixtures that we have. There's no other towns, there's no way of getting from other towns any Admiral, we went that route too to see if there was other towns that might have had some Admiral hat lights that the town could, we could have picked up to put in our inventory and stock, but there's none available. So it's what, what we have is about 188 lights, so.
Just to... That's what I was going to ask.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you, you were just, point out how, what number we're talking about taking down and putting back up?
So we're looking at, there's about nine lights on, on Route 28, Route 28A.
In Lakewood.
And there's about six or seven lights out in Lakewood. Those will be changed over, over by the Mashpee Town Line. Those will be changed over to LED lights.
And then there's a few taken down at the corner of 151 and...
Correct. Yep. Most of the remaining lights in those are, all are the other areas of the LED lights. So there's a lot of, there's, there's single lights. There's a one on Mill Road, there's, you know, the, the one on the 151. So we're trying to consolidate all the lights and put those, put the, so you'd have equal lighting across, basically what we're trying to do. And at this time, with the movement of the, the lighting fixtures, we don't have any additional lights right now to put in our inventory. So they're basically being moved from one section of town to another section of town with no remaining lights.
And the added cost we will have at some point is there may be 180, 180 fixtures that the town will have to pay purchase to replace possibly down the road.
Correct. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping with this retrofit, with the, with the, with the LED conversion, with the new photocells and the new Y going through the Ys and the cables and the connections, hopefully we'll get some many years to go, to go out of them. I mean, I think they're, they were installed in the 1950s maybe, 19... I mean, I think they're installed in the nineteen fifties, maybe, nineteen fifties, late fifties, so we've had them for sixty-plus years, so.
And there's no sign that they're, I mean, they hang in there?
Yeah, I think that when they, they get damaged, just like the other lights, they can get damaged in a storm, they can get damaged, you know, that way. But Insta, yeah, Insta does not support the, to support those lights, so.
And also until a KPL compact came forward, it was on us to replace any light that broke anyway. It was just because, so in some ways, that's always been in our mind of being an ongoing maintenance feature to replace light bulbs when they die.
Correct, correct. And at this time, we're starting to feel more of a little pinch from Insta with the conversions of the lights. I think that their schedule is with the, with the time of the season and what have you, or I think that their schedule is, they're overbooked, so they're trying to get into the towns and do the conversions of the lights. But we have some of those areas in town with the conversion of the lights coming back, so. The lights are not operable at this time. And one other, one other item is in the fall, at this meeting, it was brought up in the fall, Public Works will put out a work order to just trim up some of the foliage and the overgrowth around the lights. And we're not talking massive branch removal, but trimming around the bulbs so the lighting actually hits the, hits the street. On Route 28A, we had a, there was a meeting that was asked exactly of the uprush and the upkeep, and that is one of the items that, on Route 28A, this fall, the DPW box department will be uplifting some of the branches out there, and they'll pay attention and focus to the, to the streetlights.
Any other questions, discussion?
Then the motion would come on to authorize the town manager to execute an amendment to the streetlight conversion compact with the KPL compact.
So moved.
One second.
Any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And I want to thank Tom Renshaw and Catherine and Frank and Kevin and all those from the Woods Hole community and elsewhere, who, and Peter, of course, who really worked on this project because I, you, it's, it's always been true that when the public participates and brings their input to the project, you always end up with a better solution and a better project. And that's exactly what we've done, so thank you very much.
I just want to be impressed at how much listening that all of this, you know, the whole discussion of, of people actually hearing what the other people were saying was very impressive.
Yes.
And if I just may say, I've learned a lot with these discussions too. I know all the residents, I've worked with the residents down on these streetlights, and I learned a lot. No, it was good. There was good interaction between the, between both sides. And as they say, a good happy medium came through.
Well, thank you, Peter, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to a discussion and action on the Eco Toilet regulations. I think many of you, and hopefully you are aware, that on Friday, the Eco Toilet regulations that the board voted were printed in the enterprise so that the public had an opportunity to read them and review them. And tonight, we have an opportunity, if anyone is here from the public who wishes to comment on the regulations, saying, we'll take the public comment first. So is there anyone who cares to speak? Steve? Steve, that's it.
Madam Chairman, we love our Eco Toilet.
Oh, you have one?
I'll show you a picture of it if you want. But we love it.
Good. Did you participate in this program, or you just, you did? Great. Wen Monroe, member of the Water Quality Management Committee.
Precinct Seven, a member of the Water Quality Management Committee. I started out a week ago, I sent in, dude, I sent Julian a long, long letter, about nine questions I had. I reduced them through discussions with Jerry Potomac and other people. I reduced them to three changes. One substantive and small substantive change, and the other two very minor, like I was wording, right, to put those down here. And I think we don't, it won't take long to make it clear. I'll just go through one after the other. Section one, lines two and three. The idea of a lottery. Jerry and I discussed...
I think we need to, okay, oh, okay. Do you have your, you have your copies?
Everybody have their copies?
Well, I want to ensure everybody had their copy of the regulations.
Oh, yes, okay.
So we know what we're changing here. Go ahead.
In the event that, the important, the important line is, in the event there are more applicants than the maximum number of permitted properties, the Board of Selectmen will select properties by lottery. Both Jerry and I, after discussing this, think it would be better just to drop the idea of a lottery. And the main reason for doing that is, if you hold the lottery late, because people sign up fairly late, you're going to be very unfair to the people who have done all the work early, and all of a sudden, it's fine, they can't do it. And the second point is, we're not going to get fifty people at this point, we don't believe. So just to make things simple, drop out the idea of a lottery, and I've, I've provided some words you could use if you want to use them. If you don't want to use them, that's fine. So that's my suggestion.
So your words are, properties will be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis?
And then...
And the property will be accepted upon submission of a formal proposal?
This just gives...
And that eliminates the lottery?
That's right. That says, it gives a point at which you can accept a property and know that they're going to be in the program and...
But still limited to fifty? Still is the maximum fifty?
Still a maximum fifty, yeah.
I think that's very wise, because otherwise, you're absolutely right. No one can start until the deadline.
That's right. No one can start until the lottery, if there are that many people going.
But we won't know if there's a lottery until the actual deadline.
That's right.
That gets you to see if you can get fifty.
And I thought of all sorts of ways of dealing with, have the lottery early and then, but it's just, it's just simple, better just to, just to get rid of it, so you don't have that problem. The second one is just a change, which I noticed. There is no Board of Health homepage, there's only a Health Department homepage, so just make that change.
Could you refer to which one you're speaking about?
Section three A. It says, the second bullet is under that, information on Eco Toilets is available on the Board of Health homepage.
Contact the Falmouth Board of Health?
There isn't one. There's only a Health Department homepage. I looked for a Board of Health homepage, I couldn't find it. I figured that kept being referred to the Health Department, so that's just a simple change. And the third one is a slightly more substantive than that. Three C, the fourth bullet. I read that whole section and all of the things concerned with it, and I found, as I read through it, that it was reversing the order, that the bullet itself was reversing the order in which things occurred. And it just seemed to me, I'm presenting this as a possibility, that the change, which is written in red down here, would restore the logical order of events without changing the meaning of the bullet and not change anything else.
So tell me, tell us again, what is the intent of your change? What does it do, basically?
What it does is to, the way in which things occur now is that people in the Eco Toilet program, which are in there now, and it's going to be the same way apparently in the new program, that they do certain things with the Board of Health and so forth, and they, they get, they get approvals and permits and so forth. And then when they have all that together, the town manager can sign the, can sign off on the, on their participation agreement. And then after that, after they've, and then after they have completed everything, after they've completed the whole, then at that point, I think I've just said something quite wrong. I think I was just turning it around, that you only, Julian, you only sign off on the participation agreement when they've really completed the installation.
I believe so, yes.
That's the way it works. And then, after that, they have to go and take it to the bank, or take it to the, take it to the, have it recorded, to the recorder, have it recorded, after that. And the project is not finalized until after it's recorded. And then you have, it, at that point, it constitutes an encumbrance on the property title. And that's not the way that fourth bullet says it. It says it in a, in a circuitous way. It says the same thing, but it says it in a circuitous way, which I couldn't understand until I thought along the time about it.
In the way it was written right now, if you took it as a checklist, you would do the last thing first.
That's right. That's right. Exactly.
The reverse thing is listed, you say, can't do that until you've done everything else.
That's right.
So this is just saying, just listing in the restrictions or the requirements, the order in which you're going to do it.
You can check whether I've done it right, but...
No, I think that makes sense.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Wen?
And I assume your committee agrees with these suggestions?
We haven't met, we haven't met since, we won't meet until Thursday, so I don't know...
Well, we can ask the chairman, see if he wants to ask you.
I'm not speaking for my committee, I'm speaking for myself as Precinct Seven. I just happen to be a member of the committee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wen. Eric Turkington, would you like to comment on the proposed changes? In other words, you won't have to have a meeting now because we'll do it tonight.
I bet they have something else to talk about.
Eric Turkington, Precinct One, and the chairman of the Water Quality Committee. As Wen said, our committee has not opined on these regulations or on any of this, since it's basically in the town manager's court and the selectmen's court. But my own personal view is that Wen has identified several places where these, the proposed regs can be improved, and I would support them, and I would be very surprised if anyone else in the committee would disagree.
So it doesn't really change the substance of the language, it just makes it clearer?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I will say, the town manager's office has spent an enormous amount of time and energy on doing this and making sure it came out right, and I think they've done that. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to comment on this, on these regulations or the participation agreement? Mr. Fineran.
Mark Fineran, Precinct Six. I'm actually part of the program, I just haven't got my engineering things yet, and I've been waiting several months. But now that the letters went out, it's become kind of a topic of conversation. And I went into Dunkin' Donuts this afternoon, and there were a group of people speaking about it, and I gave them what little information I had, or the information I had, anyway. And a person in a home on Mira Vista and a man with a business in T-Ticket both showed extreme interest in the program. And I'd also just like to take this time to remind people, especially that live on Mira Vista, especially if you have the smaller ranches, the two or three-bedroom ones, it's the easiest installation and the most economical, and it would provide the best benefits for you and the town and the people in the future who are facing sewer-ing. And if you wanted any questions answered, you could call Ron Zweig, or you could call Hilden Earl at the Green Center, and they can help you out. And you can help us out. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else have a comment on the Eco Toilets? Well, we're going to have a momentous vote here tonight, I think. Are we ready to go?
I would move approval of Eco Toilet Betterment Exemption Program regulations with the changes that Wen Monroe has suggested.
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Well, I think that when you sit this moment this night, I'm thinking, do we have to wait for their meeting tomorrow?
No.
I mean, we don't have to wait for that. We can just go ahead with all these changes and...
It didn't change the substance of the language.
I think also, he says, this is in our hands.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Everybody happy? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have, yes, thank you. Motion carries. Unanimous. Great, thank you very much. Thank you all for a great job. I know you've worked really hard on this, and it's not over, but we're past another milestone tonight.
May I thank Julian and the people who worked on that?
Yes.
They did very good regulations there.
Great, good.
Thank you, Wen. I should say, the committee, Eric certainly, see ya, Jerry, Virginia, also to be commended for the continued fine work, so we're pleased to, as Chairman Flynn's mentioned, pleased to reach the next milestone. More to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will move on to...
Can I suggest that maybe we move to the interviews? Because we have people that are here to be interviewed before some of our sign code variances and discussion of terms.
Well, we have people here for the sign code, too. These shouldn't take very long.
Okay.
This is a sign code variance for St. Barnabas Episcopal Church, lobster on the lawn. This is something that the church does every year, and every year, they put out the same. Is there anybody here representing the St. Barnstable Church? St. Barnstable?
St. Barnabas.
Yeah, St. Barnabas, I'm sorry. I got a Barnstable in my head. St. Barnabas Church. This is really something they do every year, and it's the same sign. I do think the Design Review Committee suggested, though, if you look at the picture, that they paint the wooden posts white and put a little cap over them. I think that's a nice idea, and we might suggest to them that they do the same thing. They'll improve it and ask them if they would consider the recommendations of the Design Review Committee regarding painting the posts.
I just, I guess, I do have one little concern that they've been, the signs have been up for the past two weeks. And is that something, and I'd have no problem if the town manager had said, the Board of Selectmen's not meeting for two weeks, I am tentatively authorizing that. But if the authorization hasn't happened, to go ahead and do it concerns me a little bit, that it doesn't...
Well, this did come in on June 6th.
Right, and had to go to, you know, but they, as you said, they've been doing it for years and years.
Right.
It's no reason it couldn't have come in January 6th.
That's true. That's true, because the Design Review Committee didn't meet until the 25th.
Right, and they sent the...
So it came in on the 6th, yeah.
On June 30th.
Well, they should probably start in May, early May or something like that, you know, so that it gets through the process.
Or if there's a way that we can tell the town manager, if it's a repeating thing...
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that, but, okay. I would vote approval of the St. Barnabas Episcopal Church lobster on the lawn signs.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Next is the Cultural Survival ZAR, and they are looking for signs at Sandwich Road and T-Ticket Highway, Main Street in Falmouth Heights, Main Street and Scranton Avenue, Falmouth Heights and Robbins Road. They want to put some A-frame signs out, two, two signs at Pagnunum Park, advertising the event as well as somewhere Scranton Avenue and Main Street meet. I don't, let's see what the Design Review Committee had to say.
It's there.
They voted to recommend them to the Board of Selectmen, that they, at only four locations. Sandwich Road and T-Ticket Highway, Main Street and Falmouth Heights Road, Main Street at Scranton, and Falmouth Heights Road at Robbins Road.
That's it.
And they have two signs measuring four feet by two at Pagnunum Park, next to the stone wall, advising people to go to Marina Park as that is their new location. And those signs will be up from July 10th through July 20th. So what is your pleasure?
I move approval, in compliance with the recommendation of the Design Review Committee.
The Design Review Committee seems to be recommending six signs, and they're requesting eight, and I just wanted to clarify.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why...
Their recommendation is less than what was requested.
And that's why I specified.
And that was assumed in his motion.
And that's what I included in the motion.
And that's what he included in the motion.
So we're, we're limiting what they've requested.
So there's motion and a second? Discussion on the motion? Any further discussion?
The, just discussion on Doug's comment that there was a kind of a huge request for signage, and the comment on that this is really, they're, they're being moved from the center of Falmouth to...
From Pagnunum Park.
And I think that could be part of the reason that, number one, there were additional signs seemed to be requested, and also that Design Review Committee did approve, not the entire amount, but six signs. So to me, there seems to be a reason.
I agree. But it still meets their intent of trying to get people who go to that area directed directed to the correct park.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of the design review committee?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Unanimous, the motion carries. Next is the application for sign code variance from neighborhood Falmouth. And what they want to do is to post a sandwich sign in front of the congregational church advertising a fundraising concert to be held Wednesday, July 30th. And they understand the sign may be displayed for two weeks prior. So as well as placing a sign there a day or two before the event, so they're not looking at two weeks, they've asked permission from the owner of Kaleidoscope Toys if they could put a sign at the entrance to the store well off the path of the sidewalk. Now, this has not been reviewed by the design review committee. It says it's referring to the committee but for their, for their June 23rd agenda. And then we could bring this back again on the 28th if you would rather wait and see what the design review committee has to say. Their dates are...
The 30th.
The 30th of July.
Right.
Yeah, this is, oh, that's getting pretty close, isn't it?
That's right.
I don't think it's a really big off-the-wall kind of a request. We don't have to wait for them, maybe in the end, because we don't meet till the 28th. And that really does, doesn't barely give them two days to put up their sign. So I would suggest that we take, that we consider voting this tonight.
And it is only a sandwich sign?
Yeah, it's only one small sign and then the one in front of the store.
Yeah, and it's tastefully done.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
I move approval of the sign for the neighborhood Falmouth Benefit Concert.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, the motion carries. So, the reason I put this discuss and vote, I'm not sure we really want to vote on this tonight. I just put it in there because if we did, we have the option of voting. And this is, the current committee policy has term limits for all committees. And we know that that has, that, these are committees that are covered by the charter. So it's required that they, they have term limits after three terms. But there are committees or groups or working groups that do not fall under that requirement that, of that, unless the board would choose to do that. So I put that on there because it's been suggested that maybe we may want, or maybe want to consider not requiring other boards that are appointed by the selectmen that are not regulatory or that are not included in the charter, that we have the option of renewing memberships beyond the three terms. I don't think we should vote on it tonight. I think we should really consider it and whether we really want to do that. I mean, this is function, this was, I think, voted in 2005 or '06 when they, this, that board that was here in 2005 or '06 is the board that voted to do these term limits for a very good reason because there were a number of people on committees that had been there for a very long time, like me. I was on the EDIC for like 15 years, so they wanted to get rid of me. Not quite that way. I mean, it wasn't like, we don't want you anymore, but you've been there a long time and it's true. And so there is some real benefit to having those three term limits. And I think we should be very thoughtful in our deliberation on this since it was done with all the, you were on the board then, it's done with all the right intentions and for a very good purpose. And if we were to change it, we should have very good reasons for changing it. So I'm just going to bring it up tonight and say that there is no urge, urging or any real urgent way or reason that we should consider this tonight. So I brought it up just for the idea of it's out there now and think about it and we'll put it back on at a later date. And we'll proceed according to the policy at this point if that's agreeable.
So the two things we're governed by, one is by the charter. We can't change that easily. But we can change it at town meeting.
At town meeting, that's right.
To election. Without going to a charter review because the selectmen can do that.
Right.
And the other is our committee appointment policy, which we can change anytime we want.
Right.
And the charter one governs the boards that are charter committees. The committee appointment policy, as I read, governs everything, but we can change it very, very easily.
Yeah, they charter, but there are also other committees that are regulatory that may not be in the charter that also fall under the term limits and we can't change those either. I mean, without a town meeting vote.
Right.
So if that's okay with everybody.
I agree with you.
Did you want to say something Catherine? I wasn't on the board then, so...
Well, just because I'm, I'm still sitting here, this is from my charter review committee work. We had some discussion of what was actually covered by the charter. Did you have to be a named committee in the charter? Part of the reason we went to governmental bodies as a defined term in the charter was so that it would be a broader scope and would cover even committees that are not named in the charter. That was, that was a discussion item that the charter review committee had and we thought long and hard on that. We put a lot of effort into that. You could go back and read the minutes that are still online from those discussions. And we did, we did think about this when we were reviewing the charter.
We have to have opinion from Frank that what, committees that are appointed just by the board of selectmen, he does not feel are governed by the charter.
But you have a definition in your glossary for governing bodies.
Governmental bodies.
Governmental bodies.
We went to governmental bodies to include all the committees, all the standing committees, everybody, all the organizations, so that it would be clearer that things apply. And the only one that's different is ZBA because of the length of the terms.
Okay, so is everyone agreed to set this aside for a while until we get more information? Okay. Then we will move on to the, oh, actually Diane provided for us a database showing all the board-appointed, town manager-appointed, elected committees. So that will be really helpful because at our next meeting, we want to finalize the liaison assignments as well.
We don't have, we didn't get that.
What, oh, you didn't get that? Well, I'll make sure you get it.
Yeah.
All right. The first is the EDIC. We have already interviewed Kevin Murphy and Jay Zavala. There is one vacancy on the EDIC. I know we had some communication from the EDIC that they wanted to expand their membership, but the board of selectmen has to review that with council and we have not had an opportunity to do that yet. So I think tonight we are limited to only appointing one person to fill the vacancy.
Do we have the option of taking it under advisement until we can consider that and then?
We could do that.
Yes, I think as Kevin said, EDIC doesn't meet again until September.
Right.
Yeah, we could do that. We can take it under advisement tonight and not appoint until, until after we have all the information that we need.
What's the other information?
Well, the information is the EDIC has communicated to the town manager that they are increasing their membership from seven to nine.
Yes.
And that then would allow both Kevin and Jay Zavala to be appointed. But remember, the EDIC was created by statute and it specifically says there'll be seven members. So we need to be sure that the, that the, that any bylaw changes that the EDIC wants to make for themselves are consistent with the statute. And that's what we have asked Frank to do. Who has the power to increase the members? Because this is, as I said, it's a quasi-municipal agency. It's, it's organized under the town. It is, even though it does not report to the town in the sense of any authority, this board does point all the members. And the legislation is very specific about the areas of the community that should be represented, like there should be someone from low income, someone who has financial experience, someone who has industry or business experience.
Real estate?
Yeah, and someone who has a real estate experience. And usually the selectmen in making their appointments have always been very considerate of that requirement that's in the charter, that you try to appoint people who represent those areas of the community.
And what was the idea they had to change it from seven to nine?
I can't speak for them.
Oh, they didn't, they, they haven't said, put anything in writing while they're doing that? No?
Well, they presented something in writing to the town manager, but that has to be reviewed by us and we haven't, and that's being reviewed by council. So we don't have any guidance yet from council on that, so...
The interviews were earlier than they should have been.
I know. We can appoint one at this point.
Yeah.
Because there's one.
We could appoint one if we chose to, or we could just, as Doug suggested, wait until we sort it all out.
I like Doug's idea. It's a, you know, it's an active issue and I think it might make more sense organizationally to resolve that rather than having the group a little more splintered if it does end up being expanded.
Okay. All right, so a motion to continue?
Yep.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so we will continue.
Thank you Jake.
Thank you Jake.
Conservation.
Here we go. Okay. Conservation. The conservation commission has a full position that expires on June 30th, 2016, and three alternate positions open, two with terms expiring on June 30th, '16, and one expiring on June 30th, '17. And is Mr. Pallone here tonight? There he is. Hello. Welcome. You are interested in the conservation commission. We're happy to hear that. So tell us why you're interested in the conservation commission.
My name's Jonathan Pallone. I am originally a resident from North Falmouth. I was, I grew up there in North Falmouth. My parents are Chris and Pam Pallone.
That's what I thought, but I didn't want to get personal. Thank you for saying that.
They've both been involved.
We know them very well.
Okay, great. So I grew up here. I went to college in Pennsylvania, junior out of college. I studied ecology and philosophy there. I moved out to the Southwest. I lived in New Mexico for the last 10 or 11 years. I worked for the park service and held various other positions and ended up going to law school in 2008 and graduated 2011. Moved back to Falmouth where I am starting a family, living in Woods Hole and starting to have a practice, a law practice in Falmouth now, renting space from Paul Glynn. And doing a bit of real estate and I feel like that's something that applies to the conservation commission, understanding the proposals that are being brought before the commission, where people are coming from, with their development concerns. But I also have an environmental background and really appreciate, appreciate the mandate of the conservation commission in preserving our natural resources and I feel that's very important. So in moving back here, one of the things I wanted to do was become more involved in local government. And when I saw that there were vacancies, I jumped at the opportunity and I'm very interested in pursuing this task and I'm, thank you for inviting me here this evening and I welcome your questions.
Questions from Mr. Pallone? Could you talk more about your knowledge and experience and education in the area of the environment or ecology or...
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. It's been a little wild, but I have various education, my ecology background dealt with studying limnology, plant physiology. When I was working in New Mexico, we studied how plants were regrowing in areas after massive forest fires, which they have a lot out there. So all the different ways of going about and collecting that data and analyzing it. I also, for a while prior to that, worked with Mario De Gregorio in his wetland surveys. And I've also just spent a lot of time running around in the woods of Falmouth here and there, running through the marshes, checking out the wildlife out there. Everything that grows out there is really fascinating and really lovely.
Mario De Gregorio is a botanist, some of you may know him, yeah.
Right. I also worked with Amy Laderman for a little while when she's, she's working on White Cedar Swamp restoration. When I was in Santa Fe, I worked with a permaculture company and got certified in permaculture, which is a landscape technique which tries to pull in a lot of the holistic elements from ecology and apply them in a more practical perspective, I guess, with the way people use their houses, the way they collect rainwater and how that gets translated into the natural environment. Keeping water clean being one of the big priorities there. So that's all kind of informed my experience.
I remember Jonathan was a student of the children's school of science many, many years ago.
Oh, yeah.
His excitement for science is true then too.
Becky?
You're going to vouch for him then when he was there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Have you spoken with any of the members from the conservation committee?
I did.
And what did you learn?
I learned that they have a very difficult job, that it requires a lot of balancing different interests and it requires a lot of work. You have to go out and spend your time doing field surveys and really do a lot of pounding the pavement, I guess you could call it. But it just takes a lot of time and commitment.
And it didn't scare you off?
Initially it did.
Okay.
But I talked to a few people who, with their wise counsel, they gave me the motivation to continue forward without any trepidation.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Want to make a motion?
I would move to appoint Jonathan Pallone to the conservation commission to the full position, term expiring June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you're not, or mistaken. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Say hello to your parents. They must be thrilled to have you back. Next is the waterways committee and they have two vacancies with terms expiring 6/30/16 and 6/30/17. And Mr. Shear is our applicant tonight. Welcome Dan.
Thank you for inviting me. My name's Dan Shear. I live in West Falmouth, Old Dock Road. And I've just served my term limits. Actually, I went, I think, three years old on the solid waste committee, which I enjoy. And I came to Falmouth because I love Oat Buzzards Bay, Vineyard Sound and the options of all our harbors and so forth. And I like boats. I know boats. I've been on them all my life. Lived on one for a while. And I feel that the waterways committee needs help. We have probably one of the finest marinas on Cape Cod anyway, if not almost anywhere in Falmouth. It's a wonderful one that we developed. Green Pond is a great oat marina for a small harbor. But I think we're, or an elected, or pardon me, what, I can't say that, an elect, not taken as good care of as we should, or some of our smaller harbors and looked after them. And I think it needs a work. I'm very interested in it. You, this board took an, some idea of mine from moorings, for instance, which the water waste committee is not in charge of. I wish they were. I think they should be. But to be able to, or at least them back to the town for a year if you had one and so forth, and it never went into effect, which I feel is, or too bad because not only would bring in a few dollars to the town, I think we have to think about all the industry that goes along with owning a boat. And if we have vacant moorings and not the use of all our harvest or to as, as large as we can without overcrowding, but, or we chip a lot of people that paint boats or at bottoms, store them, service engines, make sails and so forth. And I feel that we need or to support two areas in our town very strongly. The beach committee, which I happen to be a member of, and the water... The Beach Committee, which I happen to be a member of, and the Waterways Committee. And I think they also should be working together because we are dredging, we are using sand, we are using so forth. And that's my idea.
Doug?
I have two questions. One is exactly that. Do you think those two committees could be, would serve any purpose to combine them and have it be one committee?
I have talked to our town manager about that. Yes, I do.
My second is, and this is, I just want to see how you handle this question. We have two vacancies, one ending June 30th, 2016, and one ending June 30th, 2017. We have two candidates. Who should we give which position to?
I'm 77. I don't care.
That's an answer?
Sorry?
No questions on this end.
No questions on your end? No? All right.
I have been to their meetings. I do know what they do. I think I get along well with Greg Fraser.
Okay, so there. Okay, so we, thank you, Dan. We have another candidate. We're going to, I believe, is he here? Maxwell John Weinfuss? Yes, hello.
Hello.
How do you like to be referred to?
Max Weinfuss is fine.
Max Weinfuss, great.
Yep.
Well, thank you for applying.
Well, thanks for...
You can tell us about your interest in waterways.
Yeah. So this actually is my first round meeting, so it's been experience and...
No doubt.
Yeah. I've been a resident for seven years. I live in T-Ticket. I'm retired here at this point, so I'm a boat owner and love, love the waterways as well as you do. And I'm retired, so I've, you know, looking for some way to contribute to the town. I haven't before, with the exception of maybe two weeks putting together a bunch of nets for, for the oysters. So that was fun. And I'm a neighbor of Mike Powers, and so he's gotten to know me and he thought that I, that I would be able to make some contributions to, to the committee. So I don't know a lot about it. Really don't know what, what kinds of work I would do. I'm retired as a, as a professional project manager, business manager for a few high-tech companies. So I think I can organize things. I think I work well with people and would just like to contribute. So I don't have any, you know, personal agenda except wanting to contribute and see what I can do to improve things for the waterways as well.
Doug?
I have a few more questions for you than I do for Dan because I've known Dan for too long. What kind of boat do you have?
I have a 20-foot, it's called rigid inflatable boat, so it's, it's got a fiberglass hull, but it's used a lot by the Coast Guard and police, that type of boat.
Where else have you done some boating?
Just here.
Just here?
Yeah.
We have both the Waterways Committee and Beach Committee. I'm not sure if you're familiar with what the different responsibilities are.
I am not.
Okay. So the other questions, who should get which term? If we have the two terms, two positions, one ends 2016, one ends 2017, how would you resolve that dilemma for us?
I don't have an opinion either, really.
Coin toss. A coin toss. Well, how did you happen to choose waterways rather than some other vacancies that we might have, which are great to view?
Just because Mike Powers approached me and said that there was an opening. And I guess he also knows Joe Voty, who's on, pronounced right, who's on a committee and had high praise for him and thought that it's a good committee.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the possibility we have two good candidates.
But we have two vacancies.
And two for the 16th, 2016, 2017. And, and would you prefer to have the 2017? Or you're just saying you don't have an opinion?
I don't really have a bias.
Do you have a?
Yeah.
That's probably...
That's not quite part of our procedure, Dan, but thanks for the offer. So what is your pleasure? Would anyone care to make a motion to appoint?
I would move...
One at a... Oh, go ahead.
I would move that we appoint Max Weinfuss to the term ending June 30th, 2016, and Dan Shear to the term ending June 30th, 2017, to the Waterways Committee.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? Motion carries. And thank you both very much for applying. I'm sure that it'll be a very interesting committee. Okay, the next one is the Board of Registars. And these are, these are required by state law. And the selectmen are required to appoint, and we appoint by political party. And in this case, we have one Republican and one Democrat. And Avaus Grossline has been, her name has been forwarded to us, and she represents the Democratic Party, and Grace O'Gorman represents the Republican Party. So...
I would move we appoint Avaus Grossline to a term ending April 1st, 2016, and Grace O'Gorman term ending April 1st, 2017.
Excuse me?
Just somebody second at first? Okay, no.
Then what is the position of Edwin Stadlerman?
Who?
Mr. Stadlerman. Let's see.
Oh, no, he's just sending the letter recommending Grace O'Gorman. And make, he's the Republican Committee Chair, and Megan Bragg is the Democratic Chair. So they're forwarding the names to us. That's the procedure in the law that the chairs forward the recommendations to the selectmen. Okay?
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries. And now we will have individual selectmen's reports. Anybody done anything exciting?
I haven't seen...
You attended your first meeting of the EDIC?
I attended my first meeting of the EDIC, which was very interesting, as we've heard lots going on there. I'm glad he's still here. I also attended the annual meeting of the 300 Committee. And it was a wonderful presentation, great group. And Dan Shear and his wife Deb were recognized for a very substantial black beach gorgeous property given to the 300 Committee, and I'm glad he's still here. So that, that was very amazing, and that's a group that is, just has incredible volunteers. People give in many different ways, and they do a tremendous amount for the town. And I'm going to go kind of quickly because there were a few things. At the West Falmouth Village Association Annual Meeting, Mr. Suso, Mr. McConity, attended. And it was town meeting-style, rapid-fire questions, and it was a lot of fun. And those gentlemen did a terrific job in answering all of the questions, any question that anyone in the community wanted to raise. And John Ross, who had recently been awarded the Guardian Award at Buzz, for the Buzzards Bay Coalition, was awarded the Villager Award, so I just also want to recognize him. We attended the Carousel opening, which was a lot of fun. I know you were there riding around, Mary Pat. Also, the Museums on the Green event with the incredibly homemade ice cream. Almost done. The Boat Club in West Falmouth was attended by Admiral Buran from Mass Maritime Academy, who talked about the Cape Cod Canal Centennial Celebration, so everyone should look at that. And sort of my favorite, I got a personal tour with Don Hofer of all of the beaches, including the Ellen Mitchell Building, which proudly displayed the window boxes from the Old Stone Dock Association. There is a, he went into a lot of explanation about the makemesmile.org wheelchairs, which go on any kind of terrain, sand, and right into the water. And they, there is a program that if you are having an event or attending in a locale where you have handicapped, you need some handicapped accessibility, you can get access to those chairs, and that's, you know, the community should know that. It's a great program. There are two very fun things. One is, there is a video called Call Me Maybe. I think I have that right, where everyone on the Beach Committee, who is an employee, really dances and sings to the video, and it also promotes the beautiful beaches. And I just want to segue over to, he told me an interesting story about how they keep the seagulls off the roof of the snack bar. And it was inspired by something that happened when you got your first tour, Mary Pat with the seagull. I don't know if you want to disclose.
There I was at the snack, the concession stand at the Ellen Mitchell Bath House, and we had been on the tour for at least three hours at that point. It was a hot day in the summer. So I said, how about getting something to eat? So I ordered a coke or something and a hamburger. And I came outside and clicked the hamburger and was just about ready to put it in my mouth when a seagull came, took it right out of my hand, and that was the end of my hamburger. So you're right.
He remembers that.
You have to really watch the seagulls down there. So I never had lunch.
He's still telling that story?
He's still telling the story.
Good. That was a good report. Anybody else? Stan?
Yes. I attended the School Committee meeting on June 24th. It's the last one that they held. Just as you've read in the newspaper, there are a lot of parental concerns, as well as citizen concern about the cutbacks that were required to balance the budget. A lot of that questioning the impact of the school program, something I think we need to be concerned about moving forward. I did mention already that there were, there are efforts to kind of consolidate the emergency response programs, and there's great cooperation between the School Department, the Fire and Rescue, and the police. And that was very evident in the report that they gave at the School Committee meeting. And the last thing is just to mention that the School Department's in the process of revising their strategic plan. And I know I'll be participating in that process for a full-day work, working group meeting on the 29th of July. So that's just some key points. I attended the Fourth of July Parade in Woods Hole, the Science Parade, and I had young children with me from my family in Maryland, and we thoroughly enjoyed that parade. And then we went to the fireworks. This all happened, of course, on the 6th of July, but, and the fireworks were terrific. And I really appreciate all the efforts of the Fireworks Committee to promote that and all the people in town that contributed to making that happen. It's a great, it's a great event, and one that is much appreciated by all the people that go to that. I also attended the West Falmouth Village Association Annual Meeting, and Sue modestly neglected to mention that she was given an award at that meeting. I agree with her. Julian Suso and Peter McConity did an excellent job of presenting some of the projects that are going on in the West Falmouth Village and responding to questions. And I think it was just a really valuable exchange of ideas and meanings and thoughts and plans and what have you. So my kudos to them for a great job. And then, let's see, the last item is just, I attended the Community Preservation Commission meeting on the 10th. And they were going over proposals for consideration, which will be brought to the town meeting and will be part of that deliberationist process. And they have proposals for, from the Housing Stabilization Fund, the West Falmouth Dock, which Julian and Peter presented backgrounds on that project, the West Falmouth Library, and then High Field Hall, all people submitting proposals for funding through the CPC process.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to add my congratulations to Dutch Jollet and the Fireworks Committee.
Yes.
Because they had a tough time in terms of deciding which is, which was the best night. And I'm sure it wasn't easy, but they ended up picking the right night.
They sure did.
And it really, they went off very well.
And the public safety, people all had to switch their schedules. And just the coordination of all that was amazing.
Yes.
Agreed.
So the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excellent comments. Just a couple additional. I wanted to pursue with the board any potential interest in adjusting the August meeting schedule. Talked about the possibility of meeting on Monday, August 11th and Monday, August 25th, which would keep your same sequence of meetings as opposed to what had been tentatively programmed earlier, which would give you two consecutive meetings. One, the 28th, and then the first meeting in August would have been on the 4th. So you'd have two in a row, two Mondays in a row. So, but just wanted to raise that with the board. And the other question, corollary question with that. We tentatively spoken at the strategic plan meeting, as I recall, about the joint meeting on finance being the 18th. So the question would be to explore whether the board would be interested in making that the 25th, which would be your second meeting in August if you meet, if you adjust your schedule to be August 11th and August 25th. So I wanted to put those couple items on the table for that direction.
So 11th and 25th work for everybody?
Works fine for me.
Does finance regularly meet the 25th?
No. We would invite them to a joint meeting.
Right. Finance Committee normally meets on Tuesdays. In fact, they meet tomorrow night.
Okay.
So...
I would agree with the 11th and the 25th.
That would be Finance and School Committee.
Correct.
Finance, School.
If, if the board here concurs with the 25th, I would reach out to the Finance Committee and the School Committee, asking if they could join the board in a three-way joint meeting on finances, which we would present to all involved.
Couple of years ago, maybe it's been longer than that, we had a meeting with all three, Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee. It was over at the school in the library.
Right.
And that's when I think, not the actuaries, but the invest...
Bond Council.
Bond Council came.
Yes.
And it was really a very interesting meeting and discuss... You were, you were on the School Committee then?
So was I.
And you were too, yeah. So I thought it was very valuable.
Yeah.
My first Southwest, I believe, was Bond Council.
Yeah, Southwest.
Media presentation.
All right, so 11th and 25th it is.
11th and 25th. I don't know if you want to vote that or potentially vote the 25th as that finance meeting, or if there is a consensus, Madam Chair. I'm certainly comfortable with that.
We have a consensus, I think, yeah.
And we'll, we'll reach out to the, the other boards and invite them to, to join us at that time.
Do we want to look as to whether that needs to be in a different location?
Oh, yeah, it would have to be in a different... Maybe we could go back to the school.
Sure, we've done it, we did it at the Morris Pond. We've done it at the library.
No, it's the high school.
The high school, but years before that, we did it at the Morris Pond Cafeteria also.
Oh, that's right. One year it was there.
But so, there are plenty of places.
Okay. If it's agreeable to the board, maybe I'll work that out with...
With Sam?
Well, with you, Madam Chair. And, you know, invite the other two boards to join us.
Okay.
We'll double-check and make sure the schools will be available if that's where we end up going.
Okay.
That might be an issue, where it's a week before school opening, and teachers are returning that last week of August. It might be an issue.
But it's in the evening.
We'll check that out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and it would be very timely with the, incredibly, the FY16 budget preparation about to begin with us on the cusp of FY15, just having started in the past 14 days. It's amazing to talk about that, but the reality is that's how early we get started, as the board's aware. So it'd be very good.
And DLS just sent out the budgets.
Yes.
The increases in local aid.
Right.
For schools, for lots of things, for, you know, for Chapter 90, for Chapter 70, for local aid. And what's the other one? The, the un...
Transportation.
Un, un-something local aid. You can use it however you want it. You forget the term, but anyway.
Unencumbered, unrestricted.
Unrestricted local aid, that's what it is, yeah. So everything was higher than last year.
Yeah, it's continued good news.
Which is good.
Is it appropriate to ask, you know, whether there were any deviations that might impact the FY15? Or is that not part of our agenda? That you might have noticed.
At this point, at this point early in the fiscal year, nothing extraordinary. Yeah, we, as we get closer to the November town meeting, we'll have a better handle on that. But in terms of revenues, in the anticipated closeout for FY14, you know, the, the town is in a, you know, it continues to be in a reasonably good position. So, you know, it's, our progress is measured and deliberate, and we want that to continue. One other comment, Madam Chair, if I may. And obviously, we'll have a lot more information on the August 25th, on that going forward. We'll look forward to that and a hearty dialogue with the other boards. In the spirit of comments about the Fourth of July, I was also pleased to be able to observe my first Fourth of July Parade in Woods Hole and join Selectmen Patterson and tipping my hat to them. That was, that was definitely fascinating. And also a, an appropriate level of parade at Quistah Harbor, which I had never... And also a, an appropriate level of parade at Quistah Harbor, which I had never seen before. And sort of serendipitously happened to end up there when the parade was starting, and found a parking spot and enjoyed it, and was happy to applaud all the marchers. So that was, was also equally fascinating. And my compliments as well to all those involved. Dutch Drolet, all the members of the committee on the fireworks postponement for two days, certainly was a good call and an excellent display. So thanks to all who've stepped up year after year on that excellent community tradition. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
And one thing you mentioned in your written report, dealing with parking. And we had said when we talked to the farmer's market in the spring that we'd try to get some information about parking in Falmouth over the summer. I know I was driving around today, which was not a farmer's market day, for quite a while trying to find a parking space, and do think that we need to come back to a discussion about that in the fall, about what can we do, is there anything we can do to cover parking? And I also want to appreciate the mention of both the Quistah and Woods Hole parades. I was thrilled that my truck got to run in both of them with the timetable and moving there. I was not driving at either time, but my truck was there in both parades.
And it was a striking truck, I mean.
The highlight of the parades.
So you're working on the parking.
With regard to parking and some downtown issues, I am working with Town Engineer Peter McConerty. That's good news. We're working together to try and put together a protocol to gather some information to assist this board in decisions that you're going to be making in the year to come, especially on special events. That having been said, we're still tweaking what we can gather and how reasonably we can gather it, so we want to, we want to try and gather in a form that's of use to the board and not just raw data, and we're limited as to times. So that's, that's the good news, is we're still working on it, but we see that occurring in the month of July, and in the month of August, and September, as time permits. The bad news is that our efforts to secure a, an intern for the summer, we'd advertise it as an unpaid position, given the realities we have with the budget. And although in other communities I've worked in, we were able to attract unpaid interns due, with course credit and some other things, we did interview a couple folks who were well-qualified, but they secured other positions and ultimately declined. And what we decided to do was work with Peter and generate some data that maybe would be a little bit more on point, and try and reinvigorate the advertising for potentially an intern program in the coming year. So that's a little update on that. Thank you.
I'll do your turn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.